Welcome to Eastern Sierra Now Business Matters with me, Amy Smith. Today, we're excited to welcome Brent Truax, a write-in candidate for the Mammoth Lakes Town Council. Before we dive into Brent's vision for Mammoth Lakes, we'd like to remind you to like and subscribe to our social media channels, especially YouTube, so you don't miss any of our exciting shows this political season. Don't forget to check out our other popular shows on the Eastern Sierra Now Podcast Network. Right now, we're offering special sponsorship opportunities for businesses. So if you're looking to advertise on the most-watched local news and entertainment channel, now is the perfect time. Brent has been a driving force in the community, serving as chairperson of the Mammoth Lakes Chamber of Commerce and working on initiatives to improve infrastructure, beautify the town, and promote local business growth. He's here to share his plans for addressing affordable housing, sustainable development, and ensuring Mammoth Lakes continues to thrive for both residents and visitors alike. Let's give Brent a warm welcome. Brent, it's so good to see you.
So good to see you as well.
Welcome to the show.
Thank you for having me.
You and I have known each other for a long time because we've both lived in Mammoth for a long time.
And kids in school district and all the rest.
We do. We've got your daughters a similar age to my kids. And it'll be interesting to talk to you today because even though I know you socially, I know Betsy well from Girl Scouts, I don't know a lot about what you do within the town, what your goals are for the town of Mammoth Lakes. So I'm excited to ask you some questions today and get some answers regarding what your plans are and what you'd like to do going forward.
I'd love to have that conversation and go through some of those.
Awesome. Are you ready? Can we start now?
We can start now. Can I give a preamble?
Yes, you can. I would love that.
So my quick preamble is, one of the reasons in terms of why I'm running is because my wife and I have an agreement. And the agreement is you can't complain about what's happening if you don't become involved. And we firmly believe that if you're going to make a difference in the world, you become involved. And that's why I decided to become involved, because I'd like to make a difference in this community. So that's my quick preamble for the questions and just to start you off.
I like that preamble. And your wife, Betsy, was instrumental in encouraging me to volunteer. So a little bit of kudos to her for getting you out there and getting you involved. But for me as well, I was the treasurer for Girl Scouts for a long time, and I was also a Girl Scout leader. And we adopted that same idea. If you have a complaint, if you have an issue, come on board, volunteer with us, and help with the troop or help with your kids to bring it to the level that you want to see done.
And I agree. Betsy pushes me all the time. It's a great partnership.
We're lucky to have her, and I'm glad that she's pushed you into that position. And I think just in general in life, I think that's a great outlook to have, to give back, to contribute. And if not, maybe not complain so much.
I absolutely agree with that.
Wonderful. Let's start about your local experience in Mammoth Lakes. You've been active with the Mammoth Lakes Chamber of Commerce and other local groups. If elected to the town council, how do you think that your experience will help you tackle big issues like housing, sustainability, and development?
Yeah, I mean, I think the way looked at is perspective. I mean, I've served on the chamber for quite a long time. I've also been on many other groups, including Disabled Sports in the community and Mammoth Lakes Recreation. And all these give you different perspectives. Because as you go through, sometimes we all think about what we want to do. And it's really about the bigger part of the community and what's the community there. For instance, in the chamber, we just did a local survey. And the survey shows that workforce housing is still one of the top issues, and also finding good staff is an issue. But they're very much on the same page. If you can't have somebody that comes to town and work and live, you can't have somebody that lives there and becomes a good workforce for you. So looking at those in different areas, like on Mammoth Lakes Recreation, what trails do and how much we are here because the natural environment is part of the community and what we'd love to do in the community for recreation. These are all important matters and how you tackle those. So I think the biggest answer to that is perspective on the whole area, perspective from different points of view, and being honest about what does the town need.
And I think that's key because, as you said earlier, it's not just about us, it's about what everybody wants and about making that goal together and trying to achieve that goal with unity behind that.
It is. And just understanding that. And to me, I hope when I get there and make a decision, I ask myself, is this right for the community?
Yes.
And at the end of the day, do I feel good about that decision? So those are the kind of things that I look forward to and hopefully will make some good decisions.
And I think that's key in politics, representing everyone and the needs of the community and the business members as well.
I absolutely agree.
Yeah. Let's move on to balancing tourism and local needs. Tourism is huge in Mammoth, but it's a tricky balance with the needs of the local residents as well. How do you plan to handle that balance, especially when it comes to infrastructure development and keeping the community strong?
Yeah, it's interesting because I think that's one of the preeminent issues out there. We have workforce housing, and we do have this balance that takes place within the community. And we are a tourist-driven economy. Most of what we get in this community and have for recreation facilities and amenities are derived from having the tourism dollars that we have. At the same time, we all move here because we want this great place that we can go out and recreate, and we want to be able to enjoy it ourselves and not just being a part to somebody else coming in and enjoying it without us. So I think that the balance kind of strives both ways. It's not about the total number of people coming to town. It's about how do we educate people to be responsible stewards of the environment? We saw it with some local activities, including Victor the Bear that's taking place up in Mammoth. And we have so much that we can learn from this and move forward, but we have to work together. I think one of the frustrations people have is we talk about doing things, and then we don't do it. And try to say, okay, what's the core ingredients, where we're going? So for instance, one of the things that we're able to do in the community is we built a new community center in Mammoth. Visitation went from 15,000 to 30,000 for the ice rink for the wintertime. We've got a new dog park that's opening up very shortly here in the next week or so.
Oh, that's exciting.
Got a new performing arts center that's going to be built over the next couple of years. So we actually have some amenities that are coming into town. But at the same time, we've got to make sure that when people are coming to the town, they're not being disrespectful to the community and disrespectful to the local environment. And I think we've gone past part of that. Originally during COVID, we saw a lot of people coming out camping, being very disrespectful to the local area, fires, all of that that took place. That has diminished by quite a bit, but we still have that same portion where people coming to the town and there's a portion where they're doing things that we find unacceptable. And I think we have to be much better at educating them and providing them with opportunities to be more educated before they're jumping into our small community. Because we are a town of 7,000 people. You know, we'd say 8,000, but it's really about 7,000. And that blossoms to about 45,000 people on a busy day. So it stresses us from that standpoint. But I also think that leads into a little bit of infrastructure from an overall standpoint because we're a town that's surrounded by 85% is Forest Service around us. We have to grow our partnerships with the Forest Service so that we can provide the amenities that we need. We don't really take care of some of the things that we should. And the town is taking on a lot more over the years than I think that I thought we would. You know, for instance, the Lakes Basin, the Forest Service does not do the bathrooms. They don't do the trash in Lakes Basin. The town does those.
And this was a question I wanted to ask you because you're talking a lot about education and educating tourism. And you brought up Victor the Bear, which is just a heartbreaking situation. But personally, I feel that there were a lot of things leading up to that situation that it could have been stopped sooner. There could have been things done sooner to protect the bear, to protect the people. And it's that educational aspect that I believe is missing. How do you think you could partner with the Forest Service or with tourism to get that information out to individuals? Because we really live in a world today where if you see something happening, a bear or a deer, it's okay to take out your phone and have a selfie with that animal, which is probably the last thing that you should be doing. So how do you get in there and change that, change that understanding or that type of culture that sees those bears there for our entertainment, which really isn't, we're there and we're in their land?
We are. And I think this is an interesting point because I think there's a couple of different approaches that take place with this. One, we have a situation now where the Forest Service and the town communicate, but they don't really work together. The Forest Service has their own directives. They're trying to follow through with their own mandates. And you have the town that's trying to be a responsible party in this whole process. I think we need to be, one, on the Forest Service side, be more political. We need to go to Sacramento and have more conversations in terms of how do we bring the Forest Service to the table to be a partner? And I'll talk about Victor the Bear a little bit. I was at a town council meeting, and the Forest Service is saying, oh, we monitor this area here all the time. And I'm not trying to put down the Forest Service at all, but the camp hosts are saying, we've never seen them in three years here. How are we going to educate people and also establish a boundary within the wildlife so that the bears know that it's not right to go into the campgrounds if no one's ever there?
Certainly. And if that bear is coming into the campgrounds, the food is out. That's a problem. So the campers need to be educated to put the food away. But when the campers are just sitting there eating their food, which I've done on those very same picnic tables, and the bear comes up and nobody is there to discipline the bear, it just looked like a recipe for disaster, in my opinion. And I think that's what happened. And I agree with you. Bring the Forest Service in. Make them part of that community, the campers, the bears, you know, the tourists. I think that would be a great solution.
Well, and you go down that line. I think part of that conversation is who's responsible for up there? In terms of, I'm talking when I say up there, the Lakes Basin.
Sure, sure.
Who's responsible for making sure that the wildlife understands it's not acceptable to be in certain areas? If the Forest Service can't do that, how do we do that? If the town has to pick that up, and I'm not a huge fan of us having to always take over for the Forest Service.
Yes.
But this is critical need. This is something that has to be done. And maybe there's some funding from the Forest Service that can help us augment our capacity and our ability to take care of and educate up there. But where you're starting to go for that second and third point is, when we go down through, we have to have education of people coming into the campgrounds in terms of what is acceptable behavior, making sure people put food out correctly. I mean, we're talking about Victor the Bear, and one of the things was the guy who was causing a little bit of challenge was doing selfies with the bear up there.
And that's just, oh.
And you're like, why? Why?
Yes.
It's just not good behavior from our standpoint. So there's challenges on both sides.
And I think you and I know, living in a community where we regularly see bears, they are part of the community, but they're not our pets. We have to be careful to keep our trash and our cars and all of those things locked up. It's so ingrained in us. But I think with tourism, those individuals are getting further and further away from nature where they just don't understand or have that level of respect.
And part of that, I think, goes down to the last part of education. I mean, Mammoth Lakes Tourism, some other nonprofits in town are taking a look at that. But how do you have a process where somebody's going to camp into an area that tends to be more animal activity, that they understand what is appropriate behavior? And not just handing somebody a flyer.
Yes.
There's been sites that have done education portions where you have to watch something before you can stay in a certain area.
Sure.
Maybe there's ways of doing those types of educational portions that brings it to light and highlights the activity. But I also think we need more presence of somebody there monitoring and keeping a fair area for safety for everybody. And that means educating the bears that it's not good to come into the area, but also reminding people and giving them fines if they are violating what needs to be done, actually writing a fine and making people pay that for doing bad things.
And I agree with you. I think that's great. But you need to have that interim. You need to have those individuals, and it needs to be someone's responsibility. So hopefully, the situation will raise this to, you know, an elevated concern, and somebody will step in or somebody can be made responsible for that communication.
And I think that's the biggest point. And a lot of what I'm looking forward for the town is who's responsible for certain areas? And not in a bad way. How do we make us come forward and be better?
Yes.
Because if no one knows who's responsible for a section, it's just going to lay in an abyss and not get done.
Yes. Yeah. And I think that's key in communication. Thanks for sharing that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I appreciate your thoughts on that. And I hope we see that implemented. That would be fantastic.
I think something will happen, but I'm looking forward to actually some things taking place very soon so we can see some changes there.
Good, good. When we do, we should talk about that. I know our listeners are very curious about that. Come back, and that would be another way to educate people as well.
I think that'd be a great way. I'd love to come back and do that, just on that topic alone.
Oh, we could probably sit here all day and talk about that. But let's move on because I know that your time is limited. So let's go back to infrastructure and beautification of Mammoth. You've talked a lot about beautifying Mammoth Lakes and improving infrastructure. Can you give us a sense of what specific projects you think should be prioritized and how they'd make the town more livable?
Yeah, I mean, to me, Mammoth is our home. It's my home. Reason I live there is because I love what it brings. But when you come up to Main Street, and we've done a lot of work on Main Street and Old Mammoth Road and even some of the surrounding metropolitan areas there, it doesn't really come across as that we've really taken care of that part of the town. And I think there's some simple things that we can do. And like Main Street, we've done the beautification. It's still being done. It'll take a little bit before it's finished. But like Old Mammoth Road, we still have weeds that come across the whole district there. And I throw this out, and I want to be careful about overstepping. When you're on council, you give really advice to one person. That's the town manager runs the town. And so you're trying to give them guidance in where you want to go. But I believe there's things that we could do very simply that would take care of a lot of those areas and provide a better atmosphere when people come into the community. I mean, in some areas, we still feel like we're 1980s that has not been renovated. And I think we have the opportunity to, with light touches. I'm not saying we have to restart over everything.
Sure.
But like, just getting the weeds out, getting astroturf in or something like that that can really make us feel like there's a softer presence to it. It's just a lot of concrete, a lot of sterility that exists.
Yes.
And I think we can soften that. But I think the other part too is we're in a community that we live and die on internet this day and age. And we have the last mile problem. Last mile being, if everybody's not familiar, we have Digital 395 that comes up. We only use a small fraction of that because it's not connected to everybody in town. So a lot of businesses in town are operating on the old coax cable systems that are spread throughout. It's slowly getting better. Part of that, the county just got a $10 million grant to help improve infrastructure. But Mammoth is only a small portion of that grant. So we have to work with the administrators of the grant to be able to get as much dollars as we can in the community to get better service throughout the entire community. We really should have fiber pretty much running throughout the entire town, and we don't. I mean, I'll pick on myself. I'm at home most of the day. My internet goes out six to seven times a day.
Oh, my goodness. That's got to make it so difficult to do your job with, as you said, being in the internet where the world, the connectivity. How do you manage that when things are coming up and going down?
Exactly. And I mean, I've even looked at bringing in Starlink to have an augmented internet service because no promotion for anybody, but Starlink has worked really well.
As a backup to, when you're dealing with that disconnectivity?
But I'd rather have fiber. And I think we can do that if we plan it accordingly. And we're doing street work. We can do other activities that come through. And we can augment that availability throughout the community. The other thing that, I mean, it's a widespread, but I think we reached a point in time where we should have town-wide Wi-Fi. I think that we really should have an opportunity to have something that's available to everybody with the entire community for better communication, better performance, better activity throughout the entire town. And I think that'll augment our availability also from a standpoint of cell phone service. Because one of the things that we all see during like Christmas week, if you try to do a text or do a phone call, it doesn't really go anywhere.
Yes.
And if we were having the availability of a solid public Wi-Fi, I think we could really augment the availability of people having access and connectivity at all times of year.
I think that's a great idea. And I think when people think infrastructure, sometimes they think sidewalks. They think buildings or community centers. But I think Wi-Fi is a key part of infrastructure. And it's interesting to consider that in this situation. And as you're redoing sidewalks, as you're redoing roads, bring those cables to where they need to be, to the people, so.
And last part with infrastructure, and you mentioned buildings. We're at the point where we've got the multi-use facility that's up and going. We're building a performing arts center. So what's the next stage? What's the next planning? Because I don't want us just to stop and say, okay, we've done this, and now we're looking forward, and we should think about it. I'd like to make sure we've engaged the community. We've already had conversations in the past. But what's the next thing that we're going to take place? What makes sense within the community? Where can we do it? And what is a good amenity, not just for the tourists that are visiting, but for the local people that want something within the community? I think it's a good opportunity for us to look at the next stage and keep the town growing with the amenities that we offer for the residents.
Sure. And then you're going to the five-year plan, the 10-year plan, and so on down the line. I think that's key. When you mention engaging community members and finding out what we need, how do you do that? How do you talk to people? How do you communicate? Where do you get that feedback from?
You know, and I think that's a very good question because a lot of times, the town does a very good job of holding forums and meetings. My experience is there's a limited number of people that show up for these meetings. It's very small.
Or my experience has been it's the same people.
It's very, that's very true.
It's similar in volunteering.
But I think when you're taking on the role of being on the council, you've got to make yourself available. And that means go to local coffee shops, go to places where people are congregating. Shady Rest is the most popular place on Saturdays that possibly can be. That means going down there with a cup of coffee, having chats with people about where they want to be, what's going to take place, how they vision the role for the community, and take that feedback and do something with it. But I think it requires more than just the town's effort. I think you're responsible, if you take on this role, to do some of that work yourself and make sure, again, perspective. Getting the different perspectives from the local community and what they think.
Well, and I think Shady Rest is key because having kids, I think I've spent a very large part of my life there. And you're going to where the families are, to where the communities are, the locals. Because we're there with soccer, with all of our sports, with running. You know, I think I've spent a decade at Shady.
I think we all have.
Yeah, gorgeous spot. So yeah, I think that's key in communication. So you're actually going to the people, talking to them directly, so.
Correct. And what I find is you find the nodes that people go to, and that's where you interface. And sometimes you're going to get things you hear that you don't like. But the question is, how do you make changes with those and how do you improve it? I'm very realistic. I believe that I'm not going to be able to do everything in terms of I'm one vote on a five-person council. I'm 20%. I like to think though that if we can agree on the commonalities of where it needs to go and work to get those commonalities done, that a lot of things will happen over the next several years.
Sure. And I think the power of everyone working together is so valuable in addressing issues and things maybe we don't, you know, we'd rather not look directly at, but I think it's key and having those long-term goals as well.
Absolutely.
And speaking of that, this is a very interesting subject in the entire state of California right now, and that's affordable housing. Affordable housing is a big challenge in resort towns like Mammoth Lakes. What policies or strategies would you push to make sure that housing stays accessible for long-term residents and for seasonal workers as well?
I think, Amy, you're hitting the number one issue that's been around the town for a long time.
Yeah.
A lot of things stem from having affordable housing. Where our challenge right now is, we have the parcel in Mammoth. We just opened up like 69 new units. The problem is the AMI. So many people are not qualifying to be able to reside in this community.
Can you tell me what AMI stands for?
So it's the Annual Medium Index, if I have it correctly.
Okay.
So that's the average income for a family.
Okay.
So because the goal of the parcel was to meet unmet needs for lower-income individuals, the challenge is that the pay scale, if someone's making, let's just say, about 22 bucks an hour, they don't qualify to live in the parcel because they make too much money.
Well, I would imagine that even $30 or $40 an hour sometimes could make it challenging to have affordable housing just in California in general, let alone Mammoth.
Absolutely agree. And I think, so the next phase that they're doing for the parcel will have some variation so people with different income levels can apply. But still, we aren't meeting the people that just need the basic workforce housing. And I believe we need to be more political on this side of it. The people that are developing the parcel are working hard. They've already changed the AMI at least once, so they've raised it. But still, it's not enough to get the people in that really need a job. I mean, I talked to many businesses in town where all their employees cannot qualify. That's great. They're paying enough to do it.
Sure.
But it's also not great that we're not taking care of the people who are in need. So I think we need to be able to go in and really force the hand of the state and say, all right, how do we get this AMI larger so that we can actually get in the people that need housing and go from there? The other part is, how do we move this along a little bit faster? And I recognize there's always permits. There's always things that have to go. And there's environment. There's the weather that we all have to work with. But we have the property. We have the location. How do we keep this moving forward on a pace that is commensurate with the need? And for instance, the town has gone out and they're promoting a 2% TOT increase to go for affordable housing. I've endorsed that to be on the ballot measure. But I want to make sure that money stays for affordable housing. I don't want it to get mingled with other money. I think it'd be very important that we take the money that is dedicated for affordable housing and use it smartly, not just put it out there to do expensive units.
Sure.
But how do we get the most for the buck and make sure that we're meeting the needs? And I think that that middle, unmet AMI people need to have someplace to live. I mean, running businesses in town, you've got people that are coming in, and you're offering a decent pay, and then they say, I can't afford to live here. And then you don't get the workforce to fill it.
And many businesses that I know, and even mine personally, we try to provide housing or at least credits towards housing just to get people in, to give them a space to stay. Before we go too far ahead, for our listeners that don't understand, what does the TOT tax, what does TOT stand for? And how does that tax structure work? Just a basic overview of it.
Oh, thanks for bringing it back because sometimes we talk to these acronyms that gets beyond. The TOT is transient occupancy tax.
Okay.
So when someone stays in a lodging establishment, they pay an additional fee on top of that for tax. Town's budget is about 70% derived from that TOT revenue.
Oh, I see. I didn't know that. That's good information to have.
So the TOT is paid mostly by visitors. I mean, by and large, it's a tax on people coming to visit our community. And as part of that, funds the town. But there's certain things that are with there that go to a T-bid as well as they are part of the, hopefully, workforce housing amenities that we go forward with.
I see.
Because we still have about 400 units still to build over at the parcel, maybe a few more than that.
That's amazing.
It's only going to help if we get them built.
Yes.
And if anyone hasn't been over to the parcel, I will say, it looks good. It feels good. It's a great facility.
I haven't been there yet. I need to be on the ground.
Need to come and go do a walk-through.
Oh, I'd love to do that. We should. We should show our viewers that. They're able to do that.
These are very nice units, covered parking, playgrounds.
Covered parking in Mammoth. That is key.
Childcare is there. It's available to anybody in town. The parks are in there. So there's some great amenities, but we just need more units.
Well, and it's good to know that that's what the TOT tax is going for so we can actually see that physically taking place. And then you said that you'd like to build more units, to bring more units onto that same parcel?
There's plans for it. I just want to keep it moving along at a pace that starts.
Yes.
And what they're doing in those units is they're pre-constructed units. They do the areas. They come in, and once they start, they can move along fairly quickly.
I thought that that was built pretty quickly, what's there on the property now.
But the next one, you know, we just need to make sure that we don't lose pace. And as we start putting in people units, the hope is that some of the people that are living in other units will free up and will have even more inventory available. And we're trying to work with other programs in town so they don't become short-term rentals. But that they're actually available for people that need housing in the community.
And the town actually owns that building. So we're not looking at developers coming in to build it?
It's actually owned by a separate parcel, but it's restricted.
Restricted, okay.
So it's only can be for people of certain incomes can live there. Yeah.
Great, great. That's good to know. And now what about resort fees? Because I know when I go to a hotel outside, I don't stay in hotels, obviously, in Mammoth. I don't have to. But when I travel to Reno or even other places, now when I walk into those hotels, I'm sure there's taxes involved, but I'm also seeing resort fees. Is that something that Mammoth does? Do we see any of that in our community?
It's actually a fair amount. But what we see nationally is headed though is that probably those are going to go away. And we'll probably see all one rate that's going to be advertised and no more resort fee. I think it'll head over the next couple of years where you'll see those start to fade away. It's tons of, resorts fees obviously is a way for hotels to cover certain amenity costs.
I see.
But at the same time, everybody's trying to compete and show the lowest price they can online, so they advertise a price and they have a resort fee.
Yes.
Because I have the same thing.
I always wonder, where does it go? Who's getting the fee?
I always pick on Reno, because I go Reno, spend a $79 room, and like, how'd that become $159?
They are hot. I've seen them, $45, $50 resort fee, and the same thing, twice, almost twice the cost of the hotel. And I'm always curious, where does that resort fee go? If, it's not a TOT, it's something that, right?
No, it's not. And usually it goes for the amenities on the property.
Goes right back to the hotel.
With a pool, wifi, internet, those type of amenities that take place.
Okay.
But I think we're going to see over the next several years, that gets incorporated into a rate and that will be reduced dramatically in terms of what people will see for a resort fee.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's a smart idea. Thanks for clarifying that for me, because I had no idea. So let's move on, and let's talk about community collaboration. We've talked a little bit about that. But collaboration seems to be a big theme for you. How would you bring local businesses, the government and residents, which we talked about earlier with you going to them at Shady, together to create a shared vision for the future of Mammoth? And I think on this question, we're really thinking about government and local businesses for that shared vision of Mammoth.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a challenging area too, because what we have, and we talked about briefly before, not everybody gets involved.
Yeah.
And only unless something comes up where everybody's got upset about something, or they want to see something change, because also in the world happened. But how do you constantly get involvement from the businesses?
Yes.
And I think for me, my plan would be using the chamber as part of a leverage there, because the chamber has grown over the years and has become a very active voice for the business community. And to help generate activity from the standpoint of comments or direction in conjunction with the chamber on the business side. But I think there's, you know, as you said, business on this, but I think we still have to involve that Forest Service and the other agencies so that we're all at the table.
And that's the governmental aspect.
That's the governmental aspect, and we need leverage there. And the challenge always is, is we're, again, officially 8,000 people.
Yes.
We don't have a lot of votes. And we don't see our state senators, we don't see our state congressmen very often. Only every time election comes, they all come and say, "Oh, we're going to come to do something." And then I don't see them for months. They do respond though, if you start pushing on them and say, "Hey, we've got an issue." And they are usually pretty active about responding to that.
If we take the issue to them.
If we take the issue to them.
If you take the issue, or if the town collectively takes the issue to them.
And I like to think that we could bring them here, but I think we may have to go to Sacramento and say, "Hey, we have a problem."
Yes.
How do we address this? And I find that if you get people all in a room together and can talk civilly to each other and say, "Okay, what's our major issues? How do we overcome these?" You can go a long ways. And that might mean that we have to bring business people over to Sacramento as well with political leaders. And even in Mono County, I think everybody has to work it together. And get together in a room and say, "Okay, here's our 10 things. How are we going to address this?" And nine times out of 10, it comes back to money. It's like, who's got the money, where it's going?
Who's responsible? Where are the funds for this project? How do we balance our budgets?
Exactly.
Things like that, yes.
And I think that's where we have to be sensitive and not be defensive on all this and protecting. I mean, let's go back, related back to affordable housing. The county has land in the county. Maybe there's opportunities for us to do other things in the county that makes sense and work beyond the boundaries of Mammoth to work with the county to address certain things.
And have that collaboration.
And have that collaboration.
Yes.
Because like, what they call the old substation, which is down just above the airport. They're actually going to do van life location for the county is going to be a place where, at this moment, if it all goes through, people can park there and have a safe place to park and park their vans.
Well, that would be wonderful. I live in Sunny Slope, so I'm about 18 miles south of Mammoth. And there are people parked all around, all the time on the roads, which is fine, summer camping. But it would be nice if they had amenities, if they had trash or water or sewage even, to keep that area clean and pristine so that we can go walk and take our dogs out or, you know, ride our bikes without coming up on those kind of, you know, day camping situations.
And I think that, like, the town tries to do that a little bit when it's big snow. They'll provide some parking lots where people can park. It'd be great to have some dedicated areas and say, "This is a zone where you're not violating any town ordinance. You can just be in, but it's also where trash, refuge, water, all can be done and safely."
Oh, that's great. Where are you in that process with that particular piece of property?
So it's run by the county. All I know is they're starting that whole process.
Oh, that's exciting.
So I think they're trying to get it up by this winter, but I have to double-check on that.
Oh, that would be fantastic.
I think so too. But I think that's where we can be as a large entity, looking at the issues that we have. And it goes back to infrastructure. How can we provide services that are needed, at the same time actually do something?
And that's county pairing with the town and having that collaboration like we talked about. I think that's brilliant. And throughout all of these, there's always a theme that we need to remember in the back of our mind, and that's sustainability. Mammoth Lakes is famous for its natural beauty. I know that's why I visited there. That's why I moved there six months later. I mean, it was, I couldn't believe the mountains, how majestic they were. And the skiing was just, it was incredible. How do you plan to balance the economic growth with the environmental sustainability so that future generations can have that same experience that we did when we first came in and saw those mountains and experienced this amazing eastern Sierra?
Yeah, I mean, it's a great question, because it's just like what I'm dealing with right now. My daughter's about to finish up high school, she's going to college, and I'm thinking, "Okay, what's she going to come back and what's this town going to be like?"
Oh, yeah.
Not only a job, but what's the town going to be like when she comes back? Because she loves the mountains, she loves to ski, she loves being outside. And I think that's always the balance. And this one's a little trickier, because I think it's going to be one little step at a time. I think, like, for instance, like Mammoth Lakes Trails Organization, where they do and make sure that the trails are maintained. We have a responsibility to maintain what we have around us. And working with all the different organizations, it's a small piece on everybody's plate. But for instance, simple things like the trail that comes down from Lake Basin, kind of dead ends by the brewery right there.
Oh, yes.
And it doesn't disperse into any worse. It's like you get this traffic jam. Okay, so how do you start tackling the areas where people are coming through? You know, an honest conversation about the lake basin and what we're doing with the lake basin and the traffic going up the lake basin. How do we, how do we monitor that? Is there a filtering of some sort? Do we ride more buses to get people to bus in? I mean, looking long-term, there may be opportunities that we could have more lifts that move people around through the community and have like central parking lot where people could be moved around without people driving all the way through the community. We're not that big. We're only two miles by two miles. We have a great transportation system.
It is a small space, it is.
But then when we hit those boundaries of those areas, it's, how do we make sure that everyone has a proper access, but at the same time, we control that access?
Sure. And we're not just talking about feet on trails. We're talking about the cars that get those people to the trailheads, and that would be key in transportation, in that sustainability picture.
I think so too. I mean, there's things that we can do there. I mean, whether it's a regional parking area that we can then transport people to other areas. I think there's several solutions that we can have. But again, we're going to come back to the cost factor and how can we implement those? Where does the money come from and what makes sense? And this is where, you know, I want to be careful a little bit, because I think I need to involve the whole community and be part of the community with that, because I have thoughts on it. But at the same time, somebody else may have a better thought. You know, how do we, how do we make sure those access points are available to everybody? Open to everybody, and that we can make sure that everybody has an equal opportunity to visit the outside.
And I think it's key to say that, that you do have to be open-minded. This is the situation that we have today, but the situation may change. And you have to be open-minded to flowing with those changes and moving with them so that you implement the right solutions at the right time. And you are, as you said, if elected, one of five voices. And I think that's key, that you have that open-mindedness to listen to, you know, all those ideas.
I think we all need to be, and there's already been a lot of work done on some of these items. But it's refreshing those and looking those and saying, "Okay, what makes sense? What can we do?" And again, going back to consensus on the council, maybe there's some things that really are just very controversial and just probably are not going to happen right now. Maybe hold those and put those in a 10-year plan, but tackle the things that we can do in the next five years.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I always like that. Get the easiest ones done first, make your changes, and then focus on those long goals.
As they say, the low-hanging fruit.
Yes, exactly.
Because, and just like the simple things, like one of the things that came up with conversations, and I'm going back to Victor the Bear for just a minute. But the bears are coming around and taking the fish lines, because people are fishing along the shores. Maybe there's opportunity to put bear boxes around the lakes in more segregated areas in terms of just that aren't next to the roads. So the bear boxes could be there, so they can put their fish lines in there and the bears aren't coming to take the fish lines.
Oh, yes.
Maybe it's not that complicated in some areas.
I've never actually thought about that, and I've seen the bear come and they take the fish.
Yep. I mean, if a bear wants my fish line, they can have my fish line.
Certainly, certainly, but you can see how that would pose a problem, and it would bring them closer to us. Where if they know those fish aren't available for them, I think that's a great idea.
So those are type, I'm just using that as an example.
Sure, sure.
As we look through, those are the type of examples that we've got to use and think about as we move forward.
And I think it's a collection of people putting those good ideas out there. I think that's more valuable than just one person coming in and making rules.
Absolutely.
So I think I've learned so much from you so far. I hope that you stick around, because we need to take a break.
Okay.
But I've got a few more questions for you, if you've got a little bit more time for us.
I do.
Okay, excellent. We're going to take a break. We're going to talk to our, or hear from our sponsors, and we'll be right back. High Point Solar is your leading local solar power and battery backup company with access to the world's best technology. High Point Solar has installed over 1.4 megawatts of solar power in the eastern Sierra. That's hundreds of homes in your neighborhood benefiting from low to no energy costs. With rising costs from the utility, the time has never been better to gain your energy independence with solar solutions provided by High Point Solar. Visit us at highpoint-solar.com. Welcome back. Thank you for staying tuned in while we continue our conversation with Brent Truax. Brent, thank you for sticking around.
Absolutely. Thank you. It's been a great conversation so far.
It has. I appreciate so much. I've learned so much from you, and I really appreciate that. I appreciate your time today, and I wanted to kind of wrap up some of the things that we talked about and just get a little more details on things, especially the seasonal influx of tourism. Now, you and I talked earlier, Mammoth is maybe 7,000 to 8,000 people. But when tourists are here, I think our populations go up to as high as 45,000, 50,000. Do you think we're seeing that many folks in town?
I think during peak timeframes, it's about 45,000.
So being a resort town, it comes with challenges, especially during those peak tourism seasons. How would you handle the influx of visitors while making sure that the year-round residents still have that good quality of life?
I think it's an interesting question, because part of that question really relates back to how we market the town. And one of the goals is to how to even out the town's occupancy so that we have more occupancy over different timeframes, but we don't have those really huge peaks at certain timeframes. And you've got to work with all the partners within the community. And one of the ones we haven't mentioned so far is Mammoth Mountain Ski Area, Altera, because they've already implemented policies where they have a different rate structure during those peak timeframes to reduce the number of passholders that are coming in during those peak times. And they're managing on their scale, because they have to have enough staff, enough activity, so that they can manage those areas. So we, as a town, have to mirror that in terms of how do we make sure that we just aren't marketing the President's Week and the Christmas Week? But also, where we do need activity, for instance, in the end of May. Typically, you know, you get, once you get past April and until second week in June, it's really not super busy in town. You know, we need to just level that out so that we're all consistent. Because where this relates back to partially is, we're all trying to find good staff. And in order to keep good staff and have good pay for them, we need to have consistent business so we can all afford those good staff. But finding that balance is always a critical portion. And I mean, there's going to be things that happen inside out, et cetera. There's some things that, by that I mean, when you take a look at hospitality, rates are going up, so you're seeing less people during the peak timeframes, but you're seeing as much money coming through because ADRs, average daily rates, are much higher. So they're doing the same thing to raise their rates, to reduce occupancy during certain peak timeframes, because they only have so many staff, and they're able to still do well financially because they have a higher rate. So it's, again, going back to that partnership portion of dealing with, okay, how do you market so that you're filling in the gap at timeframes? To the peak timeframes, you're educating people on what's good stewardship, what's taking place. But then pushing people so that they can come to different timeframes so that we even out our flow, so we don't see those huge spikes each time. And to the credit, that's what town's been doing that. I think we just could continue on doing that and figure out, okay, how do we make sure we manage that in a way? Because we don't know what's going to happen in terms of, are we going to get 20 feet of snow this winter? I don't know if I want another 20 feet.
I hope so. Maybe not all at one time.
Exactly. But snow and other, other natural environments will impact that as well and how we manage that. But working with everybody in town, saying, "Okay, how do we, how do we keep that consistent?" Because at the end of the day, we're still a tourism economy. We still need the revenue. We still need people to come here. But we need to manage it and feel good about our management of that over time.
And this leads back, I think, into the TOT tax that you'd mentioned earlier. And I'm learning so much more about that just within our conversation. We may be a community of 7,000 or 8,000 people, but that tax allows us to bring in revenue from the 45,000 people that may be here over a weekend or during a busy time, really supporting the town with their own dollars to create the infrastructure that they need.
It does. And it's a great point, as you just pointed out. When you think about it, really, the beautification that's happening on Main Street right now is from the TOT revenue. The activities that were taking place, some of the stuff with road construction, as I understand, and I want to be clear, I'm not 100% sure on this, but that's some of the grants and some other stuff in the state from the fuel tax. But the fact we're actually getting caught up with all the roads in town. But a lot of the things that we have in town are funded by the TOT. A lot of our amenities are funded by the TOT. A lot of our staff in the town is funded by the TOT. So yes, it's a symbiotic relationship. You know, we fund it, but we also have to manage it.
And that's what I always teach my children, when tourists are here, when we're in the grocery store and we're bumping into carts or we're on the roads and they're not exactly sure where the stop sign is or where the turns are, to be very respectful and appreciate that that tourist, that those tourists are here, because it's our industry. And that's how we make our livelihood. And that tax allows them to cover some of the infrastructure issues that they have for being here in our town. So if we look at it that way, I think some of us could be a lot more welcoming. I know that I'm certainly very appreciative and understand that they're here, they're visiting, and that's how I'm able to live here.
It is. And a little side story on you in this one. Many years ago, Joe Bacon called me, and I was president of the chamber at that time. And they had stopped at a gas, motorcycle group was leaving town, they stopped at a gas station. And they basically, the gas station told the group, "You can leave now. We don't really want you here." And I reached out to the group, got them to come back. But that's also led to other educational portions, whether it's through the chamber or other organizations, about how do we educate people on what that difference makes on even the small things, our customer service on the front side? How do we make sure that we're delivering a place that people want to come back to?
Sure.
And we do that in many different ways in town, but the chamber is very active in that, in educational roles and to train roles. In fact, they're going to do that this December.
Oh, that's great.
With a lot of people in the community.
And I like that our industry is tourism, because we're not really, we have our community, we have our town, but the environmental impact of tourism is, say, less than maybe a large manufacturing economy would be.
It is. And I'm going to take this a little personal in this portion. Why I got in tourism business, because I've been in hospitality most of my life. But I have this vial theory, and the vial is that I carry, or quarter of me, like the little sand vials. I like to think that everybody I meet in the world, that a little bit of them rubs off on me, a little bit of me rubs off on them. I like to think I'm nothing more than everybody I've met in the world. And I carry those people with me all the time. It may be a small part, maybe a bigger part, but it impacts who I am. And I like to think that I have that little bit of impact on somebody else I meet.
Yeah.
And so tourism, to me, is not a bad item, because I get to meet and talk to people all over the world.
Oh, sure.
I've had drinks from people from Italy, I've had people from France, I've had people from Australia. I've had people from SoCal, Reno, San Francisco. That's fun to meet different people in the community and different experiences in the world. And people are very real and humble when you get to know somebody traveling.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of people come overseas that, if they come through Mammoth, they're a little afraid. They hear like bears, they hear like stuff going on, they're like...
Or the snowstorm.
The snowstorm, they're like, oh. But having that conversation is so personal and intimate. It just makes you feel good about where we live and what we have to offer here.
And how lucky are we that people are coming to visit where we live? We get to see these mountains on our, on our drives every single day. I feel incredibly blessed for that.
It's the same thing when, every time I drive to SoCal and then I come back up, they're like, huh. Why'd I drive back down there?
Exactly. So I'm happy to share that personally with folks that come into town. And I think if we can all be better stewards and more welcoming, I think that would help that relationship as well.
Absolutely agree.
Yeah, I love what you're saying. I'm going to, I'm going to steal that from you, the impact that you want to have on other people and that they have on you.
I think it's important. I mean, and I'm not trying to make this down in terms of what life is, but you know, overall, isn't it great to meet other people? Isn't it great to know what they do and find out other things that happen in the world? It's a learning experience, and life should be a learning experience.
Yeah, yeah. And to live here, to share this, to be, to meet the people, where else can you live that so many? And people from all over the world come to see where we live. I mean, that's just so, in my opinion, there's no better place.
Well, I think that just speaks to just how great of a place, as you mentioned, we live in. This is just phenomenal. I mean, just even as you're driving up from Bishop and look up through, you're like, wow, this is, this is cool.
It is, yeah.
This is really good.
Yeah, we're very...
This makes me feel good.
Yeah, very fortunate to have that and to share that experience. Let's wrap up. I've got one final question for you.
Yes.
And that's, if you're elected, what would your top priorities for Mammoth Lakes be? And how would you make sure that those priorities align with, with the future growth of our community?
Ooh, two-part question. I think, and I'm going to throw in one that we haven't talked about already, but having housing that is available and affordable to the residents is key to me.
That's tough.
That's a number one priority, and that relates to having workforce. I'd also like to see, you know, we talked about a little before, the partnerships that exist within the community with Forest Service, how we get things done. I would like to also focus a little bit on, as a community in town, how does a town become more proactive when people are trying to do things in town? We have, we talked about beautification, but we also need to provide the guidance from the community of how we can help those beautifications come along. Or, and beautification can be just like somebody reciting their house, or reciting a building, or commercial building upgrades. But I think we need to be a little bit more forward-facing in our planning and economic development department within the town and help people through the process. I think there's a challenge right now that's perceived of people see paperwork and they don't really know what they're supposed to do. They don't know if it's good, they don't know if it's bad. They're just trying to figure this out, and they need some more guidance in that area. And then you come back down to the last part in terms of the infrastructure, the internet, the wifi. But also, you know, we've got some of our roads and trails that are very functional that need a little extending and need some continuation. We've got some great trail systems in town, but we don't quite have them quite complete. And I think that'll help with our transportation throughout the town. I mean, my daughter loves riding her bike around town, going to different areas.
And I love that it's separate from the roads. So the kids can jump on paved trails on their bikes, or I can, and it's not linked to a road. It's not the side of a road. It's its own little space.
And I give town a lot of credit, because we just repaved a whole bunch of the roads and trails in town. But I just think we need to continue on and finish up a couple of those connectivities that aren't there just yet.
Great. I think those are great goals. I can't wait to see what you do. And please come back and talk to us anytime. Bring us up to speed. Let us know how things are going.
Absolutely.
And again, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very, very much for having me.
Truly been my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brent, for joining us on Eastern Sierra Now Business Matters with me, Amy Smith. It has been my pleasure to hear your thoughts on the future of Mammoth Lakes and learn more about your plans for affordable housing, infrastructure, and community growth. Your passion for the town and dedication to making it an even better place to live shine through.